Men.
Go ahead.
Okay, hey, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight. We'll call over the August thirteenth, twenty twenty four town open initiative for maybe we stand up for what? I believe it's through the line of the United States. It's probably just one page of the God in this phone that we see as well. So.
Father God, thank you once again for entrusting us with your town. Please, I ask that you give us your wisdom and discernment to make the best decisions for our town citizens. May we honor you in all we say this evening in Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Hey, Commissioner McMullin. Fisher Pollan.
Here.
President.
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Vice Mayor Satterfield is out of town.
Good. Hey, guys, we're going to move to the public forum. Anyone in the audience has any topic they want to talk about that is not on the agenda tonight? Uh, we have any takers tonight? Oh, hello. Oh, sorry. Oh, you're gonna write this down.
Focus. Good evening, Chris Keller, twenty five eleven Stone Creek Court. Um, I just wanted to put forth to the commission to possibly consider um a moratorium for future new family developments in town until a time that we can maybe update our commercial development standards. I think that um with the future developments that are kind of moving forward through the process, the Fourth Street, the the one down here on the north side of fifty and the current apartment complex, I feel like we've kind of, you know, we've talked a lot about our two square mile town, and I think it would be lovely that we made it something that we could do this. I did read the resolution and something that I I realized, I think, is something that we don't have a lot of control over. I think that's something that so I don't even know if it's something that can be done, but um I just think that we need to be mindful that we have to have things in place so that developers don't keep coming to us with these proposals, and the only way that we can legally really um address that is to have it outlined in our our rules and our guidelines for what our town and our legislation is. So um it's just something that I think that it it needs to be addressed quickly before we get another development that we kind of have to take because we can't tell property owners what to do unless it's in our actual plans for our town. So I'd like the the commission and Mr. Mayor for y'all to to think about possibly putting something in place to protect our little town from becoming a residential development down Highway fifty. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Uh, anyone else like to speak? Okay, so I'm seeing no one. We'll close the public forum. Move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda are minutes from the seven twenty three twenty four Town Commission meeting, minutes from the eight six twenty twenty four joint PRV planning and zoning board and town commission work session. Uh, next to the state revolving fund loan extension on the OACS twenty 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 four twenty five mental health plan institution. Exceptions for serving of alcoholic beverages for the part of a bird photography lecture which is coming up, eventually up, and then the manager's report. Um, does anybody have any comments or anything on that? I do have something uh in the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything?
No.
So one thing I wanted to talk about was uh one thing in the consent agenda was the service that was in there and um just recognizing employees who um long service there. Um, and I'm trying to find it because I think these people probably should be kind of recognized for that.
Yeah, I know a few teachers. They got eighteen years in there.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So bear with me. I'm trying to scroll through to see if I have time. But, man, you got people in there for eighteen, ten years um that were in there, so.
It's about age one oh ten?
One ten? It's pretty rough, too.
Yep.
One more thing.
One.
So, you know, it being things, you know, that long is just is pretty substantial. Uh, so it's not something that should just be kind of skipped over in my mind. So it just uh just call the names of people who maybe have been here over ten plus years. So we'll start with uh Mike Parker, Mr. Parker. Congratulations, twelve years.
He's like a lot longer than that.
Twelve years this month, actually.
Yes, I'm like a hundred. Uh, this is sure, eighteen years at OACS. Uh, Mrs. Young, eighteen years. Ms. Brody, eighteen years. Mrs. Peeper, eighteen years. Uh, Mrs. Keating, eighteen years. So they were right there, ripping. The school was kind of getting started there. Uh, this is a walnut, uh, twelve years. Mrs. Murphy, eleven years. And uh, yeah, that's it. So that's uh people who've been employed or served the town. Uh, so congratulations to you guys. We really appreciate you guys. Thank you. Um, so that and and the only reason I just kind of bring that up and then um I did see the uh um the state revolving fund loan extension, Mike, and next question on that one, the timing of that project, is that to do with the uh alternative wording?
That's correct. Yeah, yeah, that um that was a um a loan that we took out. We have not expended any of that loan yet, so it's this is this amendment uh actually moves it out into construction in twenty twenty five. I don't remember the exact date, but uh in twenty twenty five. So if we in fact need that loan, it's there to finish construction. We've got four million in the bank for a five point five million dollar job, so that, you know, that'll be uh for that.
Yeah, that's pretty substantial. That's gonna be a great project uh when that's done. I think the last thing I had was um uh in the camera contract uh that was there. Um, I don't know if something that's just is N C Florida, is that a mistake or is that just a a sample contract that was in there?
That's mine.
Yeah.
It's it was a sample.
Substances.
Yeah, they're an example of what they did.
Okay, okay, just curious. Didn't know if it needed to be Oakland. So, yeah. Other than that, that's it for me, guys. So anybody has anything else, let's take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, second, second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right, guys, moving on to the resolution. Um, a resolution be twenty twenty four oh six, not the Brad Ornegus is running late, so.
Yeah, he may not be here. Um, he had a another conflict, so I'll cover this one the best I can. Um, this is the one that Chris was referring to as Resolution twenty twenty four zero six, Resolution of the Town of Oakland, Florida, Making Findings Approving Permitting Procedures for Live Local Act Affordable Housing Projects as required by section one sixty six point zero four one five one seven A Florida Statute and Providing Effective Date. Um, so this is something that we can't opt out of. We can't put a moratorium on. This is something that was dictated by the legislature. Um, in twenty twenty three, the Florida Legislature approved Senate Bill one oh two, known as the Live Local Act, and then in twenty twenty four, they approved Senate Bill three twenty eight that amended it. Um, both bills were signed into law by the governor.
Which is a good question.
The intent of the Live Local Act is to increase workforce and affordable housing throughout the state. So I'm just gonna kind of, I I went through it and and picked out what I thought were the highlights. I'm gonna just share those for the public. Um, Resolution twenty twenty four zero six establishes the review process for affordable housing projects under the Live Local Act in the Town of Oakland, ensuring compliance with state law. So projects meeting the criteria are eligible for administrative approval, so it's kind of a streamlined process um without requiring public hearings related to land use, density, floor area ratio, or height. Um, the the good thing to know is that the project still must comply with our design district requirements, including reviews by the Appearance Review Board, Planning and Zoning Board, and Town Commission. Um, but we cannot address land use, density, floor area ratio, or height. Um, so what we can look at, the boards and commission can look at other development standards such as building and site design standards, stormwater management, impervious surface, open space landscaping, environmental and tree protection, infrastructure concurrency, and proper availability of potable water and wastewater services, transportation, public schools and parks and rec, development buffers, building setbacks, parking, and any other applicable development requirement provided in the town's comprehensive plan line development code and code of ordinances. So anything but land use, density, floor area ratio, or height. Um, the process applies to projects in for us in commercial industrial mixed-use zoning districts, and they would have to provide at least forty percent of rental units as affordable housing for individuals earning less than a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. Affordability would have to be maintained for a minimum period of thirty years. Um, the town would have to also be responsible for monitor monitoring that ongoing compliance with affordability requirement. So that's a whole nother thing that we would have to come up with a process for if this were to happen. Um, in regard to development standards, projects must adhere to the highest density allowed within the town, which is twenty five dwelling units per acre. Height restrictions are based on the highest height currently allowed within one mile of the development or three stories, whichever is higher. So say it was within one mile of the avenue on Oakland, it would be four stories. If it was outside of a one mile of that, um, then it would be three stories or or less, right? Um, the our saving grace here in the Town of Oakland is due to our limited commercial industrial land. We're at basically sixteen point nine percent. Any live local act project must be mixed-use residential, not standalone multifamily, meaning that it must be a mix of sixty five percent residential and thirty five non-residential uses. So you wouldn't see any standalone multifamily projects coming in um under this. And then this procedure has to be approved by the commission and published on the town's website as part of the compliance with the LibLoc Act. Uh, basically what I have.
Okay. Do you need to read the resolution? Did you read it?
I read it already.
Okay. All right. Questions from anybody? Unfortunately, you're tied.
Yeah, I I mean, some of the stuff that you just mentioned, it's mixed. So we got a sixty five thirty five, which is already what we have been proposing on Colonial.
Right.
Right, on the commercial area, mixed use, multifamily. So, and then three stories a benefit. So long as it's not next to the avenues.
Right.
And I just don't know how they're gonna, uh, is this gonna end up being a HUD type of project or what 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 kind of?
I think it's state funding. Um.
Pretty bad. I thought I read it seemed like it was a mixture. It had to be uh, you know, a certain percentage has to be.
Yeah, I haven't seen projects get built with forty percent HUD and the other, you know, regular.
Uh, uh.
Yeah, it did happen, it's quite often.
Yeah.
Some of the largest cities, this is the F N O C of Florida League of Cities issue.
Yeah.
It's the largest cities that's really having a hard. I think the land has some issue. Some of the largest cities are really, that's a challenge for them, like all the um I want to say Orange County has a challenge for that as well. They're trying to, you know, dictate where those housing can go.
Yeah.
What is it called? Not in my backyard. And then these people like not in my backyard, that's the app for them.
Yeah.
Like not in my backyard, but you got local people fighting it with the state sets. This would have to happen. So I know Horizon West area, um, they're feeling the pressure. So, yeah, it's um it's a big deal on a state level.
Yeah.
Yeah, but as you mentioned, someone else mentioned, our small size kind of savor because we don't have that much land to get them up, but it is still a hodge.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Um, is anybody in the audience want to speak on that subject?
Of course.
Why not?
Sorry to beat a dead horse, but um you know who I am. Um, I guess it's even more of a reason why we need to um consider my previous comment because this is a situation, from what I understand, where if a developer comes with any of the sites that we have and wants to do one of these developments and agrees to the thirty years of affordable housing and all of that, then we can't tell them no, is my understanding. So I think that we need to consider that moratorium on other new developments because in this case, we have to, we would have to let this project happen. We'd have no control, and this would at least keep us from having other developments and and also this affordable housing thing if it happened. And again, I'm I'm all about people need a place to live. I don't have a problem with that. I just think we have to look at our town again aside, so that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thanks. Any anyone else? Yeah.
Um, I just have a question.
You have to come up. You have to come up.
I think you can hear me.
No, he's not.
To go to what's going.
Jan, you have to at least come where they can see you on on the camera. Come on.
There it's fine. Okay.
Okay.
Too much to Westgoing. It's my understanding that affordable housing is supposed to be owned by the city, the property?
Hmm, no.
Uh, are you sure?
That's that's another part of it, that we have to identify any properties. We did that previously, right? So that was kind of first part. We had to identify any properties that we had available that were of of an adequate size for apartment. We don't. So that's what's up on the website. You'll see that right now. This is step two is that we have to have a pop procedure in place for when somebody comes in and are asking to be able to.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing part of it. Um, I just want real quick, what Chris talked about, about trying to put more brand or change it. And last week, just so everybody knows, we had a uh ethics training commission uh planning zoning and ARB, and it's kind of a topic that was brought up and we kind of talked a little bit about, you know, we have to, if we're gonna be looking at that and not, you know, multifamilies not in the picture, we've got to get ahead of our comp plan that dictates what can and cannot be there. So, I mean, just to keep putting more tournaments on the bank, the moratorium thing is really just picks the can down the road.
That's amazing.
Doesn't do anything.
That we can actually get.
Right. So if we have to sit there and isolate and say, we don't want this on this section of town, then we've got to get ahead of that. Anything, what we gotta do. So if we're really serious about doing it, we could probably jump into that process, right? Step, sorry.
Yes, um, the only thing that I would want to take a look at is the town did fairly recently have a multifamily moratorium.
Yeah.
And uh, I know that there is some case law about when you keep kind of renewing your moratoriums, or, you know, maybe you have a little break in between, you're effectively just not letting anybody build this thing in your jurisdiction. So I have to kind of see how courts look at those timelines. Um, and and I'm not sure, as I sit here right now, when the last moratorium expired. So I have a little bit of investigating to do, but I can certainly take a look at.
I I think we should because if we really want to talk about doing that, then we need to probably jump, jump in and start thinking seriously about all areas of town to to isolate.
And we need to.
Same with that, I want to cut out.
Moratorium once or twice, I believe.
Yeah.
Once.
Yes.
This will be the third.
I believe it was effective for a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that's what we need to do.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
And a year would be our our cutoff maximum. If we were able to initiate a new moratorium, might, we could, we would only have one year to do that planning max.
Got it.
So we'd have to move.
Back quickly.
Yes.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
And the moratorium would would not apply to something like this, so.
Not live.
You'd you'd still be open to any of these.
Yeah.
Yes, incoming.
It's been called over me for avoiding any getting in the weeds problems may become, and then somebody else come to, and again, my suggestion of the more climate is so we can get the actual changes in our town requirements for commercial development to, you know, to coincide with what our, again, this is just from I don't want apartments. This is our infrastructure costs and all of the other things that come with higher density of people moving, you know, in the town and and with that fits on our systems that we haven't, haven't talked a lot about that.
But in essence, if we have a moratorium, right, if we have one, we're only holding back developers we can negotiate with and put into their contract what we really want for our town versus putting a putting that on and nobody coming to our properties to develop and have a thirty-year affordable housing come without us being able to say nothing to them and just jump on the opportunity of open land because we close the door on someone else we can negotiate with for the best of our town. I think after the, we've done it three times.
We need developers to need to start thinking about other things and multifamily to develop. There's there's nothing they can be developed.
We could persuade them that way. We can persuade them that way. We could tell them.
And it can be done. We just don't need a whole row of of apartments down fifty, you know, one after the other.
We could persuade them to the point of telling them, you know, mixed-use uh restaurants and push their units to the back because most of them who want to put commercial restaurants or.
The fourth street, we asked.
Yes, we did.
No, we asked.
We're not done yet. Are we not done with the fourth street yet? We're not complete yet.
But they have to push theirs to the back. And I guess that was.
According to where we left off at, we told them to tier it to the backside to be the highest and the front be the lowest with the commercial in the front. I think.
We need in a two-square-mile town, which has been brought up several times, we've got, we've got one interesting large apartment complex. We've got two more multifamily developments. I mean, how much more do we need?
How do we stop the affordable housing?
We can't stop that. That's what we challenge. We can't stop that, but we can stop that and something else.
Okay. Well, let's find out how how much time we have to to put that in place, and then we have a year to work on whatever we decide fast.
Seems like that has to happen quick. We're gonna change policy of feelings. So, yeah.
I'll take care of it. You got it.
He's got it. You got it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, anything, yeah. Do we need to uh, we need to perforate?
Yeah, most.
Both, yeah.
I'll make the motion to accept Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh six.
Thanks.
I'll check it out.
Get all of them on. Okay. All right, yeah. Um, ordinance, next is ordinance twenty twenty four oh nine. This is the second public hearing of this ordinance.
Yes, so for the record, this one ordinance of the Town of Oakland, Florida, amending chapter fourteen of the Town of Oakland Code of Ordinances to correct screvener's errors as to section fourteen dash one eight three impact fee schedule, providing for codification and authority of town officials and providing for conflict severability and effective date. I went over all of this the last time. I'm just as a refresher, some of our impact fee schedules when they got carried off wrong, um, they were too low. This brings them back up to where they need to be. Um, that's all it is. It's just housekeeping.
Housekeeping, okay. Anyone uh have any questions, comments? No, anybody in the audience? Anything? Okay, those public hearing, bring it back here, guys.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty four dash zero nine.
Second. Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
See you. Okay, other policy matters. Um, this is an RFP for auditing services. Uh, now it's like many of you know, or auditors retiring or cannot handle anymore, so.
Yes.
Let's go recognize you.
Oh, hi, Gabby.
Sorry. Um, so as you all know, on July ninth, our auditing firm, Bryn Jolson CPA, did our official audit report, and he announced that he's no longer going to be able to do our auditing services. So Florida statute two one eight point three nine one requires us to request bids on our auditing services as well as have a selection committee. Uh, the finance department put together an RFP, and that was published last Thursday on August eighth. The RFP will run for about three weeks in the hopes of us getting some qualified firms. Uh, during these three weeks, the town must set up a selection committee. The selection committee must be comprised of one member of the governing body and two members of the community as deemed necessary with the appropriate experience and or knowledge of this project. Uh, and a member of the town personnel will serve as an advisory capacity. I will be the member of the town personnel, and Bryn Jolson, Michael Jolson will also be um there as needed. Uh, the auditor selection committee shall review and rank the qualifying proposals individually. The committee members will meet at a publicly advertised meeting to discuss and finalize their evaluations and summarize their scores on a ranking basis. The committee chair will present the recommendations at the next available town commission, and the commission will confirm the direction to negotiate and execute a contract. Um, we currently have one member of the community that has expressed interest in being part of the selection committee, and our mayor has also expressed interest. Um, the finance department recommends that we open the third position to the town residents via an application process. The town review the applications, and we will make the recommendation at the next town commission meeting um to the commissioners based on the experience and knowledge that the applicants provide. Um, the commission will have to officially appoint a member um by the August twenty seventh Town Commission meeting, which should be at the uh point at which the bids have closed so that we can work together with the selection committee um with the open bids, make a decision. So.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Oh, my God.
Uh, any questions? So, you mayor, and then Steve Stanford, all right.
Yes, he he uh mentioned that he would want to be on it, and so.
Another one, right?
Yes, so we will um create an application, and it will be available on our town website. Um, if you're interested, you can apply. Um, and then I will review it with a lease and um we will choose someone and present it to you.
But what kind of background experience are you looking for?
Um, so you would have to have finance experience. Um, auditing experience would be wonderful. Um, if not, then uh either background in finance or um maybe municipality experience. If you've worked in a municipality before, that would be great. But I definitely just need finance experience, accounting.
Okay. Anyone interested, please. What do you need from us?
I guess accept my memo.
Okay, thank you, Gabby. Andy?
Oh, yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor of Town Commission. We got to do great exam for both of our for fiscal year twenty four point five. As you know, it's then budgets, tentative miller rate in June, uh, but since we've been notified by Orange County of the fire tax increase, um, that would have an effect on our budget. Um, the town staff has begun to kind of look at expenses and revenue again uh here in the last hour and see if we can come up with a way to possibly reduce the tentative miller rate that was adopted by the commission uh in July. Uh, so we're doing all we can do. We've got, uh, we're looking at our employees' health insurances, going back out to kind of get some quotes to see if we can save some funds there. There's a possibility for that. We're also looking uh to get a meeting scheduled with the Florida State Investment Program, which was uh discussed at our audit presentation by Mike Bryn Jolson uh to possibly make some investments that would bring some interest revenue into the next year's budget. Uh, so we're looking at every little uh penny that we have available uh without trying to affect any you know, cut any services uh to the town residents. Um, I can't say enough about the job that our department heads do, as you can see this evening um and our employees. And so our public public hearings will be in September. We'll try to bring back a balanced budget with the lowest miller rate that we're able to. Um, we've got negotiations with Orange County, and I'll let yield to the mayor um to discuss, to discuss that under his his report. Um, but outside of that, that's all I have this evening. Um, also intended, we attended, we did a webinar um for the uh Florida League of Cities uh environmental stewardship award that we won at the Oakland Nature Preserve to the Florida League of Cities. That'll be presented this week at the Florida League of Cities Conference as well, but there were about sixty attendees that got to learn about Oakland and about the importance of the nature preserve and all the many partners that have helped that be successful. Um, Jennifer and Nicole from the preserve were uh were on that as well, and so they did a great job and was very informative, and uh you got a great staff down there as well. So that being said, that's all I have this evening.
You did a great job, too.
Thank you.
Stop being so bold.
I'm sad, very much. Thank you.
I was shy. He did a great. He did. He did a great job.
Are you running, too?
He was.
I probably went on.
I was looking for you. I was ready.
I think also maybe you're sitting on UCF. What's that? No, really, yeah, the UCF uh Public Administration School, um, the Advisory Board for the University of Central Florida, so I'll be taking Bill Cowell's spot, uh, the outgoing tax collector, so.
Congratulations.
Excited for that. That's my alma mater, so.
Yeah, well, nice.
Glad to serve.
Congratulations. Yes, yeah, cool nights. Very nice, Sandy.
But Melody, you have anything?
Jessica?
Yes. Uh, so this Friday, we are opening the Lake Apaca uh history exhibit, and Lynn over at the center has been working tirelessly on this exhibit. And Lynn over at the center has been working tirelessly on this exhibit and it is looking so fantastic. Um, I just want to thank the nature preserve for bringing up some items, uh, Pola and St. John's River Water Management District, also included in the timeline for the restoration of the lake, um, and helping us fill that story. So Friday at five thirty, come meet the artists and come hungry. We'll have two food trucks there as well. Uh, Gatorland will be there with a three-foot alligator and a baby alligator. So you can hold it and touch it and feel it and um, you just. And then as part of the exhibit, uh, which will run through the end of October, um, we're gonna have Wei Shen Chen, who is a international award-winning of bird photographer. And he will be presenting a free presentation on September twelve about how we get these um, iconic shots that you'll see in as part of the exhibit. So that'll be like an extra um, uh, acknowledgement uh, to the exhibit. So we hope to see you Friday night. Uh, so may I great time. Um, and uh, thank you.
So what am I getting?
Five thirty.
There are suppliers over here on the table.
Okay.
For both.
Pretty something.
Yep.
Thank you. Please. School's back.
Oh.
Okay, I would ask is please, uh, drive state of the schools. I'll take care of our kids. Uh, unfortunately, there was a golf cart crash yesterday in Oakland Park, not in Oakland, but in the water garden side. Uh, so let's not carry that over in Oakland. Other than that, our kids are getting to and from school safely and we're looking forward to keep them going. This is important. All right. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Uh, nothing that I can think of, sir. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Debbie, you spoke your piece.
I spoke my piece.
Please.
Um, just working on getting all the business tax receipt renewals out. So we have, you know, two hundred and sixty-some businesses that we have to annually renew and um, get them to update their information and provide their fees. So working on that right now. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, so.
Um, I just want to recognize
that many audience who helped out with the remembrance day, put it together.
Trishon Bacon, please stand up. Be recognized. He did a fabulous job on the remembrance day and uh, at the Willie Welch Park. Uh, he brought a lot of backpacks, a lot of kids super happy. Uh, it recognized a lot of the residents who have made a big impact in our community. And they all got awards, Miss Brown and Mac, Miss Willie Welch. I mean, there's a long list to name. Uh, Mike Satterfield, all the residents on that area were super happy with him, with what he's done for the last twenty-eight years in our community. Who's best friends of Willie Welch. I mean, super buddies, call each other brothers. And uh, it was a great time. Uh, Mike, our mayor was out there. It was a good time. Um, also, we had a school lunch uh, that we made for the teachers. Mike Satterfield was again there at the O A C S. They were super happy that we're serving them, you know, making the burgers or hot dogs and the mayor was there, did a good speech. All of us did, you know, recognize the teachers and all their effort and, you know, just give them a good, you know, start prayer and lots of prayers for them because they're gonna have a challenging year. They have to, congratulations for the A. We all told them. So it was great. I think it was two great events that are helping our community.
Agree. I agree. And and Trill son, Trill Sean, there was three stories there, uh, residents. So it'd be great to get those people on a recording stories. So that's some funny stuff. Yes, funny stuff. Yeah, I think good.
And um, this week, we're gonna be at the in Hollywood at a diplomat for the F L C annual um, conference, me and Commissioner McMullin. So we're gonna miss out on this Friday's event, which we could be here, but we'll, you know, uh, as a voting delegate, it'll be my first time. And um, dividing conquer. You guys will take care of this end. We'll take care of that end.
How about you, Greg?
Did we, I can't remember. Did we give any recognition to the school for getting the A rating for the second year in a row?
I think we did. We did that, right? And was here last.
Did we?
Okay. A meeting ago and when she got.
Okay.
And also put it on Facebook too.
Just want to make sure that's huge.
Big, big deal.
Yeah.
Big deal.
Yeah, it's official. Now, I think when we were recognizing it wasn't.
Official, official, yeah.
So it's official, official, yeah. So congratulations to Pam Dryer, all those teachers and all its staff. It's huge.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Uh, they got a good, a big year of problems. That's good. Yeah. They're all excited. Barbecue did. So, yeah, it's great. Great turnout. Um, what you?
Uh, the biggest thing that happened since I've been here, Tri County, we had a retreat all the way over in Edin, Florida, Town of Landers. But the biggest piece that came out of that is um, we have a new executive director, which is, she's been around two years. And the goal is to have more of the local elected officials be involved with the tri county. Uh, for one, the biggest thing that you want to try to do, a session comes in and she's she's like a director on the west coast. I want to say. Every week during session, they're gonna take two or three people from the tri county area paid for by the tri county league to go to Tallahassee to lobby and speak to the uh, you know, legislators to address some of these non-funding mandates that come down to us on a regular basis. So, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna be reaching out to all of the uh, elected officials in the tri county area as they start to build their program. She's already doing it in another league, but and I uh, probably did some stuff like that over in Polk County where they take legislators, I mean, take local electors up on a weekly basis. And that's outside of the league of cities of legislative day. So the biggest piece is, is really try we're gonna come across, we're gonna come up with parties for the tri county area, create the talking points and create all the messaging. But the goal is to have at least two or three of one of the uh, cities municipalities throughout the area to go up there on a regular basis. And of course, you can address what's going on in our local town, but it's really to try to help our local, our tri county area. So that's, um, you you'll see that being developed. I know session starts in March and April, you know, goes March, April for next year. And so you're gonna start seeing some communications coming to Elise about signing up for that and volunteering. But again, it's paid for by the tri county league. It's not, nothing's gonna come out the town budget or um, your individual budget. But we really need as many people as possible in the tri county area.
And the tri county is Seminole, Orange and O C L, O C L. Okay, just.
Yeah, so, but that's going to, and then we're gonna probably have a night meeting in December. So I know sometimes it's hard for people to get to the luncheon. And they're looking to have us host. We haven't hosted up. Can't remember the last time we hosted a meeting here, probably within the last eighteen months.
Couple of years ago.
Yeah, so they're looking. So they may be asking us to host a meeting and I get a data shoot over to of one of the lunches. So, but that's the big piece. They really trying to engage our state legislators.
Yeah.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you. Um, the only thing I have was, uh, I think we all received an email from the rather than the website church, uh, which is all the topics on about the parking issue going on at the uh, overflow parking, it's kind of named on the vacant lot behind family church. I can't say last week, it was a uh, seven days of revival at the church. So I know it's a house uh, there. Uh, so you should go back to a regular Sunday. But regardless of that, um, I've asked um, uh, Andy if he would look into the agreement that we made back with Lakeside and the parking as well, if I recall, uh, back when Lakeside was getting started. By the way, sitting on the planning and zoning, there was some criteria as far as staggering start times. So that parking could be accommodated on property versus all properties. So, um, we'll have the town research that and remember that the uh, will need to drive and help out, uh, maybe in the gates and that. It it is a, you know, Lakeside is a very popular church. There is a lot of members that attend uh, the church. So um, I'm 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 one of them. So, but uh, yeah, it's very, very uh, very crowded sometimes there. So, yeah, so. Other than that, that's it for me. Nobody else?
Quite a long hours, but I'm satisfied with the journey. Seven thirty-eight P M. Wow.